I call this regular meeting of the York County School Board to order. This meeting for November 19th, 2018. Hope everyone's having a great week so far and is prepared or getting ready for the big Thanksgiving holiday that's coming, which is always a good time for families to connect. So we're going to now ask that our pledge leader, Peter Henderson, fifth grade student from Waller Mill Elementary, step forward while I'll share some information about him. It's with great pride and pleasure that we recognize Peter Henderson as our pledge leader of the month. Peter is a wonderful and respectful student each and every day. He is one of those students that just does the right thing even when no one's watching. His teachers describe him as honest, trustworthy, and hardworking. Outside of school, Peter takes guitar lessons and plays cornerback for the Williamsburg Hornets football team. He attends the Williamsburg Community Chapel with his family and enjoys building forts and playing outside. When asked what he would like to be when he grows up, Peter shared that he hopes to be a cornerback in the NFL and upon retirement, he plans to build flying cars. We are proud to have Peter as a shining star at Waller Mill Elementary and know that he will continue to make us and his family proud in the future. So please stand as Peter leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Flying cars, my goodness.
So now we're going to move into our recognitions and awards. And just as a reminder for those in the audience that would like pictures, during the break, we'll have a break shortly after all the presentations and you'll have an opportunity to take pictures of all the award winners during that time, too. So we're going to move on. Before we can move on to our seniors of the month, we have a scout here from Troop 103. He's working on a merit badge. He goes to Bruton High School. It's LeBron Jones? There you are, back there. Thank you, LeBron, for joining us this evening and I got a chance to speak with him a little bit before the meeting. A fine young man over there. Thank you. So now we're going to move into the seniors of the month. The following students are being recognized for their achievements in Bruton High School. Ms. Haywood.
I do indeed have Bruton High School. Joshua Yuvodich? Did I say that correctly? Joshua, if you would stand with Mom and Dad, Dave and Terry Yuvodich. Are they here? Please, everybody stand. Everybody stand. Is there anybody else with you? Okay. Okay. Bruton High School is proud to honor Josh Yuvodich as our November Senior of the Month. Josh is one of our most valuable student athletes at Bruton. He is an accomplished scholar and has been dedicated to our school as well as academics. Anytime he participates in sports or activities, Josh gives 100%. Josh has demonstrated his leadership ability as football and soccer team captain. He has received several recognitions including All-Conference Wide Receiver and Second Team All-Regional Wide Receiver during his junior year. He has been named All-Conference and First Team All-Regional Defense for Soccer. During the past two seasons, Josh has led Bruton in receiving yards, touchdowns, interceptions, and all-purpose yards. He is a tenacious player who truly believes in our moniker, small team, big fight. We know that Josh will thrive in school as he plans to continue to play football and study engineering. And a special thank you to Josh for leading Bruton in this year when it's been a little bit difficult with football, but I take my hat off to you, the coach, and the players for what you've done at Bruton. Join me in congratulating him.
I'm going to move on to Grafton High School. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're recognizing Florence Darko. Would her and her parents and family members please stand? It is a great pleasure that Grafton High School recognizes Florence as November Senior of the Month. Florence is an exceptional student at GHS. She is described by teachers as compassionate, gifted, inquisitive, well-spoken, and wise beyond her years. Florence is a dedicated student who participates in and promotes school activities and shows gratitude in everything she does. She is a natural leader who leads by example and takes the initiative to serve. Florence has also led GHS as holding the highest GPA for an African-American female student of her class since her freshman year, being honored at the NAACP ACT/SO ceremony held each year. Florence attends the School of the Arts studying theater, which is one of her passions. And in addition, she plays varsity tennis and participates in chorus, earning a spot in the district choir for the past two years. One of the high school clubs important to Florence is the Key Club. Currently Florence is the Key Club President, leading meetings and planning events in the community such as Toys for Tots, bracelets for CHKD, and the teacher breakfasts. Florence has dedicated countless hours serving the Yorktown community while enjoying the passion and joy service brings to those who serve and those being served. She is also the president of the Student Council Association. As president, she helps run the ins and outs of Grafton High School to include homecoming spirit days, decorating the halls for homecoming, donating her food time money to the food drive, filling out cards for Teacher Appreciation Week, cheering on the sports she doesn't participate in, attending the VHSL Leadership Forum, donated collected hurricane relief supplies, and participation in the filming of the spirit video. Florence's hobbies and talents include singing, theater, writing, reading, cooking, and politics. All right. Florence looks to study political science or French in college and has aspirations to enter into broadcast journalism. Grafton is so proud of Florence and the tremendous asset she is to Grafton High School and our community. Congratulations to the November Senior of the Month, Florence Darko. Oh, and please see Mr. Richardson, he speaks French.
All right. Next up is Tab High School, Dr. George.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's my pleasure this evening to present the senior of the month to Emma Donatelli from Tab High School. Emma, and your mom and dad, and your brother are here, the whole gang. Good photo up there, Mom. Emma Donatelli has made a positive impact on Tab High School during her entire career. A student of the highest caliber, she has been extremely involved in all aspects of school life while maintaining a GPA of 4.63. Emma is a member of nearly every honor society in our building and serves as an officer in several. She's a member of the Virginia Math League and Varsity Scholastic Bowl. Emma has played varsity soccer every year in high school, garnering All-Region and All-State honors, and also plays travel soccer with Yorktown Football FC. Football Club? Football Club. Service is Emma's passion and she dedicates herself in many different areas. She has created her own volunteer group, Kids United to Help. She has volunteered at Riverside Hospital for two summers and has actively served at Waters Edge Church for years. Emma is a member of the York County Youth Commission. Her outstanding citizenship has been recognized by her nomination to attend Virginia Girl State last summer. Emma demonstrates excellence in every facet of her life. She constantly demands the very best from herself and is generous enough to return the best of herself to others. Emma has measurably improved for school and the community. We are exceptionally proud to name Emma Donatelli as Tab High School's Senior of the Month for November. Emma, you make us very proud. Congratulations.
And next we have York High School. Mr. Medford?
We do thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Michaela Smith. There you are, and your mom and dad, and some other brothers, sister. York High School is pleased to announce Michaela Smith as the November Senior of the Month. Michaela is an international baccalaureate student and has done very well. Due to her academic success, she is ranked in the top 5% of her class. She holds membership in the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, and the Spanish National Honor Society. Michaela is a true talent on the field and is a great leader. Michaela has played both on the varsity soccer team and the JV field hockey team. Last year, she served as the soccer team captain and led her team to several history-making wins. The girl soccer team advanced to state for the first time in 12 years and won the AAA regional title, which was the first in the team's history. She also serves as the PTSA Vice President of Membership and the Social Media Coordinator. She has assisted in organizing numerous programs and supported the student body by making sure that they're aware of the events that are happening at the school. As the fundraising chair for the Operation Smile Club, she is the force behind the fundraising initiatives. Michaela enjoys giving back to people in her community. She has volunteered with numerous organizations and programs such as Safety Town, the Peninsula Rescue Mission, Top Soccer, and Kids United to Help. Through volunteering, she's been able to work with school-aged kids and students with disabilities. Michaela, we're very proud of you. Keep up the great work. Congratulations.
Okay, I'll give Dr. Shandor a second to get down front. And we're going to move on to our Student Service Awards. And the first one, Ms. Haywood, you have.
Yes, thank you. If Mackenzie Graham will come forward with Principal Jennifer Goodwin from Waller Mill. Let me share some information with you about Mackenzie. Mackenzie Graham is an exceptional student in every way. Academically, she works very hard in her classes and is a very conscientious student, always giving her best effort and consistently earning her place on the honor roll. Mackenzie is actively involved in our Fine Arts Magnet Program and most recently performed a piano piece for our annual Cavalcade of Stars show. She has been in our dinner theater each year since third grade. Mackenzie also participates in the Reflections Art Contest. This year in class, she was wonderful to welcome and befriend a new student to our school. Outside of school, Mackenzie attends First Baptist Church in Williamsburg, and she is a member of the youth group. She joined in to donate hygiene kits for needy children. She is in the Praise Dance Group and performs at her church each month. Mackenzie also attends the Academy of Dance and Gymnastics. When she is not at one of these wonderful events, she enjoys being with her family and playing Minecraft. She would like to be a professional dancer when she grows up. Mackenzie's positive attitude, kind heart, and contagious smile makes her a wonderful role model and a true joy to be around. She is a student and daughter that makes those who know her best very proud. She is an exceptional student and we are honored to have her as a Waller Mill shining star. Please join me in congratulating Mackenzie Graham.
And I have the next Student Service Award. If Brianna Anderson could come up with Ms. Hairston of Yorktown Middle School.
Brianna Anderson is a dedicated and talented student who cares about her community and often gives back to others. Brianna captured the volunteer spirit and leadership ability at a young age. She was the SCA president as a fifth grader at Dare Elementary and has been involved in the Yorktown Middle Youth Volunteer Corps, the YVC, since sixth grade. Last year, she served as an officer and was elected to be a part of the Youth Advisory Board for the Hampton Roads YVC. Brianna also attended the Regional Summit weekends for the National YVC. Additionally, Yorktown Middle YVC awarded the Student Volunteer of the Year to Brianna last year. It is evident Brianna loves volunteering as she has worked on many projects throughout Hampton Roads. She volunteered at the annual YVC Summer Camp and was one of the three team leaders actively participating in the food drive. Brianna was one of two team leaders for the Can Structure Competition in April where Yorktown Middle became the first ever York County school to win a first-place trophy. Brianna was one of the leaders of the Holiday Gram fundraiser, annual coat drive, and writing letters and collecting books for the Adopt a School program to support students in Africa. This project includes providing diverse relationships, peer correspondence, and books for students in need from another country. In addition to her volunteering, Brianna maintains straight A's as a standout member of the Yorktown Middle Field Hockey Team, is an active church member, a National Junior Honor Society member, and a Girl Scout. Brianna is an excellent role model for all students with her positive attitude and helpful nature. Congratulations, Brianna. Great job.
Next, we're moving into our Community Volunteers of the Month, and we have Dr. George. You have the first one.
I do, yes. I'd like to call up Ms. Melissa Ferguson from Waller Mill Elementary, as well as Jennifer Goodwin. Melissa Ferguson has been a Waller Mill Elementary School parent since her youngest son Liam entered the first grade in the fall of 2014. As he now begins his fifth grade year, we feel such gratitude to have the Ferguson family as such an integral part of our WMES school community. Melissa's kind demeanor, thoughtful collaboration, and heart-to-serv results in extraordinary outcomes for our students, families, and broader community. Melissa's greatest impact began last November as Waller Mill discovered a great need in the number of students who were seeking additional resources, specifically food and clothing. Melissa reached out to our school counselor, Katie Gaylord, to share an anonymous donation, which then resulted in an inspiring conversation. This in turn led to the start of our very own Waller Mill food pantry. With careful planning and collaboration regarding the setup and follow-through for a program of this magnitude, Melissa showed incredible commitment as she began her work with building our own food pantry and resource room. A partnership with the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank laid the foundation for our weekly food bag program. Melissa, with the support of additional volunteers, brainstormed creative ways to add kid-friendly snacks to the weekly shipment of food going home to students. Coordinating weekly sign-ups, organizing food distribution, and making connections with parent volunteers became a regular occurrence for Melissa. She happily visited our school frequently throughout the week to check in with Mrs. Gaylord on our updated resources. We were able to successfully feed all children in the greatest need throughout the school year as well as during the summer months. The Friendship Room, a room to store our food donations, also became a resource room for clothing, winter coats, and items needed for a successful start. Becoming a familiar face in our building paved the way for Melissa to then take the lead and become the PTA co-president this year. She brilliantly and calmly balances all of these roles amazingly well and has been able to maintain the energy needed to keep our food pantry lively and functioning at the same level of care as when it first began. A special project for all involved, the Waller Mill Elementary School Food Pantry and Resource Room has connected our larger community and aided in the growth of our students' academic and social and emotional success. It continues to fuel kindness needed to create a climate of empathy and compassion for all. Melissa, thank you for being the driving force behind such a beautiful gift. Congratulations.
The next Volunteer of the Month comes from Yorktown Middle School. Mr. Medford?
Yes, okay, so Mrs. Teresa Green will come up, please, with Ms. Hairston, the Assistant Principal for York Middle School. Teresa Green is a humble leader at Yorktown Middle School. She does tremendous work, often behind the scenes. She uses her knowledge, connection with others, and spirit to make a positive impact on the school community in countless ways. Mrs. Green's leadership includes serving as the school's PTSA Treasurer and Hospitality Chair. She also organizes and assists with concessions, spirit days, activity nights, and planning the eighth-grade celebration. Mrs. Green is always eager to help the school community and welcomes new ideas. She only wants the best for the students, parents, and staff at Yorktown Middle. Mrs. Green is a compass for the PTSA. She has supported the board transitions over the years in a positive and quiet manner, especially advising those transitioning from elementary to the middle school. Under her leadership and collaboration with others, the PTSA has continued to grow and move in a positive, true north direction. Beyond her commitment at Yorktown Middle, Mrs. Green is currently the York High PTA Treasurer and was active for years at Dare Elementary organizing the main fundraisers, serving as Reflections Chair and Treasurer. Mrs. Green often offers her help, support, and ideas to increase students' connections to school and engage all stakeholders in the school community. She makes her many contributions look easy when in reality, we know it takes passion, time, and organization. Mrs. Green has a modest nature with only the best intentions for others. She is genious and an extraordinary anchor as a compass, always guiding others at Yorktown Middle in the right direction. York Middle School and YCSD are truly fortunate to have Mrs. Green as a volunteer. Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
So now we have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation, and I'll ask Ms. Haywood to share comments on that.
Thank you. Congratulations to our award winners, and as I call your name, if you would come up, please. To Peter Henderson, a fifth grader from Waller Mill Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Brianna Anderson from Yorktown Middle and Mackenzie Graham from Waller Mill Elementary. We'd also like to recognize our four seniors of the month. Joshua Yuvodich from Bruton High, Florence Darko from Grafton High, Emma Donatelli from Tab High, and Michaela Smith from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for partnership with their donor, Joni Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of the foundation supporter. Presenting the gift tonight is Mrs. Kelly Ash of the York Foundation for Public Education. Please join me in congratulating this group.
So next, I have the pleasure of presenting, there's going to be some special awards tonight from the Trago Foundation, Trago Ed Awards. I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Catherine Blackburn, Trago Ed Executive Director, who has a special presentation, but I'll let her share everything from here.
Chairman Richardson and board members, thank you for this opportunity to be in front of you. I'm so proud to be here today to recognize the York County School Division for our National Benjamin B. Trejo Award for Strategic Leadership in Education. This is the fourth year that we've done this. And this award honors our founder, who helped build an industry in teaching problem-solving and decision-making to adults. Tens of millions of people across the world have successfully used these same tools in many businesses, industry, many Fortune 1000 companies, governments, and now in education. And Dr. Trejo was a man who believed in the power of people to accomplish important and exciting things if they worked effectively together. He was committed to helping people think effectively, to make the best possible use of the most important technology that they have, that's resting on their shoulders. And he believed that if something is important enough, if it's worth doing, we need to risk not doing it perfectly. This award honors school districts and leaders who embody these beliefs and who have demonstrated their commitment to collaborative problem-solving, decision-making, and strategic change. The York School District leaders have applied these analytic tools to such topics as making decisions around a primary grading scale and report card, decisions around website format for schools, helping to address special ed student achievement, developing a learning lab for students who need a non-traditional setting, and optimizing business-school partnerships for the benefit of high school students. So we're so honored to work with the York County School Division, to work with Dr. Shander and his leadership team. They have demonstrated in their work a commitment to the community and stakeholders, ensuring that people have a voice. They've demonstrated building transparency, trust, and support through using systematic thinking approaches for critical decisions. They've been making recommendations that are aligned with district priorities, driven by data, and based on the most critical needs of students in the district. And they've demonstrated a commitment to building individual and organizational capabilities for collaborative problem-solving, decision-making, strategic change. In addition to the presentation that I'd like to share, we are going to be developing a one-page success story that we'll be sharing with school districts across the country. We'll post this on our website. And Dr. Shander and I have done some initial planning on co-publishing an article together in an educational journal, which we hope to do in 2019. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I'd like to now present the trophy as well as individual plaques to different leaders in the district.
So I've asked the school chair and our superintendent to come here, and on behalf of Trejo Ed, we present this award to you. So please. Catherine, I'm just going to kind of yell out, okay? Individual awards of the year to Dr. Shander.
There we go. Thank you, Catherine. Frame certificate. So these are leaders across the district that have been using our tools over the past couple, two or three years. Erin Butler? Erin and I worked together today. We did some work together today with the group. I'm going to need a bigger stage before long. We're just going to fill it up. Carl James? We worked together today, too. This is strong district leadership team, folks. There we go. Mark Sheerhart? And last but not least, Anthony Vladeu. So we're working together tomorrow morning. Thank you to all the leaders. Let me slip over here.
Make sure y'all come to work tomorrow morning, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. That was very nice and extremely impressive to see how large of our leadership team that has attained that award, so thank you. So now, we're going to move into our Accent on Academics. TAB Middle School will present It Started as a Seed, and Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share some information on tonight's Accent on Academics.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Tonight's Accent on Academics, TAB Middle School teachers and seventh grade students will tell you about a recent project entitled "It Started as a Seed." To share more about this project, this is Ms. Heather Young, TAB Middle School Principal. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, community members, and fellow educators. TAB Middle is honored to be here this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share this collaborative project. Our two life science teachers are fortunate to teach in beautiful classrooms, each flanked with a large wall of windows. Unfortunately, the view from those windows didn't leave them inspired. While a small grassy area was just outside, a learning cottage and parking lot captured their attention. This prompted in an idea: How can our students apply their understanding of the ecosystem to design and construct a Virginia native garden for our classroom's backyard? Soon after, several plans for a Virginia native garden were in bloom. This project supports the strategic plan goal to engage all students in rigorous educational experiences. To bring their vision to life, our horticulture experts needed to draw on each other's strengths and work together as a team to produce the strongest design. Students relied on the 21st century skills of creativity and critical thinking to tackle design dilemmas and make the best use of the space. Please allow me to introduce you to the TAB Middle Life Science Teachers who made this happen, Ms. Laura Shasky and Ms. Sarah Wilson. Ms. Shasky will now share information with you about the goals of the project.
Good evening. On the side of our building laid a grassy area, trailers, and a parking lot. Unfortunately to us, there was just not a lot of life to celebrate in united classrooms. Thus sparked a seed and driving question: What would a native Virginia garden look like at TAB Middle School?
We thought this was a fantastic opportunity to partner with experts from our community. We are grateful to Mrs. Jody Turner, Master Gardener, and Suzie Ingle from the Bluebird
This project is not only aligned with a number of key life science standards, but planting trees and shrubs is one of the best things we can do for our environment. In addition to serving as filters that trap nutrients, sediment, and pollution, forest buffers also provide habitat for wildlife and reduce greenhouse grasses by sequestering carbon that can be reducing air pollution. The state's clean water blueprints heavily rely on the practice to help restore local streams, rivers, and our bay.
Students were placed into one of four groups and given an envelope with a driving question and a timetable of due dates for various project components. Dialogues, collaboration, creativity, research, and even debating occurred as the groups began to entangle their ideas into one.
Throughout the process, groups met to celebrate their work, as well as their concerns, ideas, and they were fertilized with further questions and statements to invite critical thinking. A thriving garden was beginning to bloom.
As we presented our project, we were given warm and eye-wonder feedback. Our final project consisted of a map of our vision, paragraph to explain the purpose and thoughts, as well as a list of items needed to construct their project as we were given a $100 budget. When projects were completed, we silently looked over each proposal and voted on the best of the class. The winning proposal would become reality. During the first year, students found that they were at a tie between four projects. They agreed to make the best ideas from each one and put them together.
Here are two pictures of students presenting their proposed project. Projects needed to include a visionary map, explanation of the plan, and a list of supplies and costs that would be required.
On Building Day, students and our families were invited to join in and construct a garden: shovels, wheelbarrows, power tools, soil, mulch, and other needed supplies. Over the last two years, we had over 75 students, parents, and volunteers participate. This was a great collaborative effort with all who were involved.
During Year One, flower beds were measured and staked, grass pulled up and dirt shoveled in. We constructed raised beds. Plants were donated by Yorktown Master Gardens. Students built the foundation of what is now our Virginia garden.
Also during the first year, butterfly bushes were added to attract monarchs. We were able to raise, tag, and release monarchs to help with migration research. A bluebird cam was installed so students would be able to witness life in real time. Flower beds were built and planted featuring Virginia native plants, and along the way, this prompted awesome conversations about plants, filtration, and the wonders of our
We again were provided the driving question, and were challenged to continue adding to this garden space. This past year, we had time to think about what to add to the garden, what was missing, and how could new ideas be incorporated? I know my group had an idea to add planters used by recycled Coke bottles, and the rainwater would fall down and fertilize the plants.
The winning projects from Ms. Shasky's and Ms. Wilson's classes were constructed over a few days after school. We had over 50 students stay to create their vision. We saw a common theme of incorporating recycled materials from both winning projects: projects that prevented erosion, assisted in filtration, and improved the living space for a variety of living organisms. A pole was installed to house bird feeders and insect holes.
So now that you have some background info about our project, here's a video tour of our garden.
In this little corner of our school, a bunch of magic and nature occurs. From habitats to empty nesting grounds, students find a need, create a plan of action, and construct all while collaborating and using bouquets of creativity.
At this location in our garden, we get to see firsthand the beauty of nature. Our classrooms are wired so that we see a live feed of baby bluebirds as eggs are laid, hatch, parents taking care of their offspring, and in a few short weeks, witnessing them fly on their own and leave our nest. This last year, we unfortunately saw sparrows invade the nest and attacking our babies. We did not see that live, so don't worry. We learned that nature can be awesome, but at the same time unfair and mean.
What I liked about the garden project was I got to learn about the ecosystem and learn about how each living thing has its own focus in the ecosystem and how it all comes together.
At this location, we planned and built for a vision of vertical planters. A huge challenge for my team was to incorporate recycled materials into our design. We used recycled crates, two-liter bottles, compost, as well as seeds. It is a fabulous example of wrapping nature with the use of materials that are easily accessible. Over the summer, water was not a concern as we placed pinholes in the bottles as it rains. Run-off from one bottle would drip into the bottles of the next level. Lots of thought and planning went into each part of the project.
A large part of our team goal was to address the water runoff and excess water in one section of our garden after it rains. We learned that ferns are not only a Virginia native plant, but a great source of soaking up excess water. We also used recycled materials in the form of abused pallet implanted ferns throughout the sections. Compost completed this project. Over time, the ferns were reduced and filled in the area, fixing the excess water situation as a part of this process. Any filtration of water that soaks into the ground also improves groundwater quality. It is a win-win situation all within our team and garden.
I really enjoyed this project because we were able, the students, were able to build this project without, it wasn't some construction worker coming into school. The students made, this was a student-led and made project.
The class before us, the beginning phase led the beginning phase of the garden has, the amount of milkweed has gone down. Due to the number of monarch butterflies, also has gone down. How do we fix that? We plant more milkweed and attract other plants of butterflies. We now have monarch butterflies that have come to our school, mate and laid eggs. We collect the caterpillars when they hatch, bring them inside the school, and witness the process of them turning into a chrysalis and hasting as an adult. Before releasing them, tag their wings and turn in the number to the University of Kansas. As data is important to follow, not only are we growing and learning, but we are active part of research.
Good job.
I really enjoyed working on this project because it wasn't planned. We got to work on it as we went and work as a team together.
Standing here at one of the latest additions to our garden, and that is our Tammy's Garden Core. At this location, there are many different resources for animals, parasites, insects. Down here is a bird feeder and various insect holes. A garden just can't have enough insect holes. Great thing, as this project continues, soul additions to the core. Additional bird feeders with dry worms may just be missed.
Students asked the question, "How will our garden be watered, especially during the hot summer months?" The fact is, there's not a spigot to provide water. Simple fix: add rain barrels to collect water. This solves two problems: provides water for hot and dry weather, as well as collects water to reduce any flooding conditions that occur in these areas. Perfect solution.
I really enjoyed this garden project because we got to do things that weren't just on a worksheet and that were in real life and that we could really experience.
Our garden project is just in the beginning stages. So much more is to work on and develop. Throughout working as a team, collaborating, researching, creating, we have built an area that is eco-friendly mixed with learning. So excited with what is to come in the future classes. I hope you enjoy our tour.
So as you can see in this video, we have bird feeders, vertical planters, rain barrels, and flower beds, and a whole bunch more stuff. But all of these structures were constructed with cost-effectiveness, the ecosystem, and the general welfare of our planet in mind. However, this is only Phase Two of our project, so there are many more constructions to come.
To wrap up, not only were standards taught, but life lessons when it comes to the environment, working together, dealing with flood-prone areas, and projects that needed time to develop.
Not all of the time do we have immediate results. Patience is celebrated as our garden changes and grows.
Phase Three will start this spring as students will research, plan, and create their vision of the garden. We can't wait to see what will bloom next as this year's class will continue our project.
Thank you for listening. We will be happy to answer any questions that you have during a few more slides.
Are there any questions or comments for?
Can you just briefly describe Phase Three?
So Phase Three will be the same driving question posed to this class. We take them outside, we let them kind of look at the garden so far and explain what has happened, Year One and Year Two, and then from there, they're broken up into groups, and they are literally given some creative time to add to the garden and start to plan of what their vision is to what needs to happen next.
It sounds wonderful. So some of the plants that you had there, were they mostly just flowers? Did you have vegetables, or was it just flowers, trees?
It was mostly Virginia native flowers because adding a tree would take up too much space, and any other like bushes or shrubs would not leave space for future projects, so we used mostly flowers.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I may, I was interested in tagging of the butterflies. So they grew and you, as they developed, you tagged them. It was something in the video that I may not have heard clearly. You shared that information with?
The University of Kansas.
Okay.
And in the spring, we will get the database of the tags that were found and recorded.
Fantastic.
So sometimes some make them, sometimes they don't.
Okay, okay, great.
That's great, well, thank you. Thank you very much, it's great for the. Okay, at this time, the board will take a short recess for the board to meet tonight's recipients and take any photographs, so we're going to take a short recess. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting, and unfinished business, is there any unfinished business?
There is none.
Hearing none. We'll move on to Capital Projects Report. Dr. Shandor, if you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Board members, good evening. I'm going to now ask Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Association Director of Capital Plans and Projects, please come forward and present this month's Capital Project Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of November. I have several projects in this presentation. The first of these is TAB Elementary School and the renovations there. We're, contractors in the process of wrapping up Phase One now, and we expect this phase to be completed during Thanksgiving break. They're also finishing the testing and balancing, or testing and adjustment of the HVAC systems there. They were actually working this last weekend with a crane there and inserting some dampers into the heating and air conditioning units on the roof. Some Phase Two work will begin in the winter, during winter break, and then during spring break, the roof contractor will be back and start installing the roof on the building, on the cafeteria and the kitchen portion of the building. They want to work, they're going to start in that area and then work as school gets out during the summer, they'll continue on during the summer installing that metal roof. The rest of the Phase Two work will start in the summer of 2019. Some of that Phase Two work is the metal roof installation. We'll be replacing exterior doors and some exterior windows and doors, and changing out the casework that's in the classrooms, the casework in sinks. They'll also be repainting the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and replacing the gymnasium floor. So you've seen several pictures of the front of the school. You can see it's a much newer-looking school now with the renovation taking place. You can see the new metal window frames, they're not green anymore, and the siding there is not brown anymore, it's light gray, so it updates the school look a lot. The next project we have that's coming on this summer is the Grafton High School and Middle School. This is HVAC and office reorientation. Part of the reorientation is building the security vestibules into front of the school at three different locations. Right now, we're in the process of selecting the LED lighting samples that we have. We've got samples from a distributor, and we're looking at those samples and evaluating those. And also, we met with the contractor, with the architect and engineers last week to finalize some construction document details, so those should be just about ready for purchasing here in December. So we plan to put this project out for bids in December and get it ready for construction this summer of 2019. Note here that the high school in the center of the building will be done summer 2019, and the middle school portion and the high school band room will be done this summer of 2020, and I'll explain that in more detail in a couple of slides. So some of the things this project includes, there's three security vestibules. We have a security vestibule at the main office for the high school, a security vestibule at the main office for the middle school, and then another, a third security vestibule at the back of the high school where they have their attendance entrance at. So we'll have three different security vestibules. The high school and middle school main offices will be rotated. Currently, they face an inside hallway, we'll rotate those so they face this security vestibule so they have better, they can have better visual field, so they can see who's exactly coming in and out of the building from the front offices. Again, the high school HVAC system will be replaced this summer. They're also going to be replacing the coolant tires there and replacing the main electrical switchboard and the generators on this school. Hopefully, we have sufficient funds and the bids come in low enough that we can pick up the option for installing the LED lighting throughout the building. This is our desire, we can reduce the cost of the lighting, lighting the building by 50%. We can reduce the cost of the lighting, lighting the building by 50% by replacing the existing lights with LED. So this drawing here is of the overhead view of the Grafton complex. You can see here on the left-hand side is the, in red here is the high school wing and you can see the center of the building there. Center of the building is where the main heating and cooling plant is at, the boilers, the cooling towers, the main pumps and things like that are in the center of the building. Those will be replaced this summer, as well as the heat pumps that are on the high school side of the building. The band room side, which is that small blue area on the left-hand side of the drawing is, has a separate heating and air conditioning system. And due to logistics, we're going to save that air conditioning system and do it the following summer when we do the middle school wing. This is a rendering of the new security vestibule. This is very similar at both sides of the school, the high school side and middle school side, the main entrances. So it'll look like this. Right now, this rendering is from standing at the front doors and looking in. You can see the security doors here, the four security doors at the end of the security vestibule. On the left-hand side, you can see the office wall there. And as we rotate a little bit to the left, you can see into the offices there. And on the right-hand side, you can see two of the security doors there. So this look is pretty close to what it's going to be like at both the high school and the middle school main offices. Another project we're going to take on this summer is the Coventry Elementary School, the security vestibule there. The contract, the architects have been finishing up the drawings there. It does include a lobby expansion. We looked at trying to put some security doors into the existing lobby. It was just too tight of a fit for traffic flow to go through the, through the security vestibule. So we had to move the lobby front wall out underneath this existing canopy. And what it also required was that the architects had to redesign the main office to allow circulation through the office from and around the security wall, or the security doors. So they had to, we had to expand the lobby and also do some redesign to the main offices there for the security, for security. We do plan to get this project to purchasing here in December and take it out to bids, for bid, and, and plan for the instruction to take place in the summer of 2019. Here's an architect's rendering of what the front of the school will look like. You see it's going to be updating the front of the school, making it more modern looking. You can see that, where, you can see the doors inside there and the glass, which is what, where we pulled forward the lobby area. And then we built a new canopy in front of that to give them some weather cover and when, and when it's raining or whatever, they can get into the front doors and not get soaked. So Mount Vernon is another security vestibule. And this one here, the design is complete already. And it does also includes a lobby expansion. Again, we tried to figure out how to put those doors in there, the security doors in there, and it was just too tight of a fit. So we pushed the lobby, the front of the lobby out underneath the canopy, the existing canopy, and built a new canopy in front of that. Again, we had to redesign the main offices there to put, for circulation of people through the main office, visitors to the main office and things like that. So that forced a redesign of the main office area there. Again, this project, we expected to go to bid. We expect the project package to go to purchasing in December and go out to for bids. And it does, the, we expect the construction to take place in the summer of 2019. This is the, a architect's rendering of what that would look like at Mount Vernon Elementary School. The next project we have on our plate is Yorktown Elementary School. This is a parking lot expansion. This design is under review. It's completed, but we're, it's under review by codes building regulations. It will involve moving the existing classroom modulators there at an angle on the existing blacktop that's out there. We're going to have to move them back to the back. And we do plan for this project also to go to purchasing in December and for the construction to take place in the summer of 2019. This is a page from the blueprints to show you kind of what's happening there. So it's, it's difficult to see it, but in the white area there on the left-hand side is actually the school building. And on the right-hand side, you see the dark area in gray. That's the new, the new parking lot. So the expansion of the existing parking lot. We're going to add 92 parking spots to this, to this school. And we figured out a way we can add another parking area in front of Big Green, which is their soccer field. That's another 15 parking spots there. So we'll add 100, 107 parking spots to this, to this school. So it should alleviate some of the parking and it's taking place in front of the school along Siege Lane. Also will give us a route to wrap the, the parent drop off and pickup line. It'll wrap around through that parking lot so that'll get, hopefully pull that line off of Siege Lane and prevent the traffic tie-ups that it's causing right now. So this is my second to last slide, and these are some other projects that are going on. I don't have any renderings for or pictures of. But we have the new elementary school, which is obviously underway, or the design is underway. Coventry Elementary School Metal Roof Replacement, that project is underway. We already have the design for the Dare Elementary Breeze Way Enclosure and the Dare Elementary Gym Floor Replacement. We have those designs at hand right now. We're going to package them, those two projects with the Mount Vernon and Coventry and put that project, put all five of those projects together and put them out as one package. Then we have the Mount Vernon Breeze Way Enclosure and the Mount Vernon Gym Replacement. Those will also be in that package. The last project I have on the list here is Tab Metal Roof Replacement. We have the design for this. We are in the process of getting contract documents signed with the contractor and we should be ready to roll here shortly on getting the Tab Metal Roof Replacement started. And this is my last slide. Do you have any questions for me this evening?
Just one, just one quick question on Yorktown Elementary School. Is the bus loop being reconfigured at all or is that remaining as is?
The bus loop will remain as is. Part of the problem there is the distance we have from the Siege Lane. We only have 20 feet to work with there, so there's not much we can do with the existing bus loop. We just want to get all that traffic that we can off of the road out there and hopefully that'll prevent some of the tie-ups with the buses and with vehicles.
What about the service entrance on the other side of the school?
We weren't, there was, we weren't, everything was pretty much on the left-hand side of the school.
So I was up at Yorktown a couple of weeks ago, and I was surprised to see that right in front, there were nine reserved spots for staff and only one handicap spot. And then toward the end, that's where the visitors parking started. So is there, is there any conversation to maybe look at that and restructure that to maybe get, get rid of some of the reserved spots or increase the number of handicap spots or?
I'm not sure about that area, but I know in this area where we're working here, there's increased amount of parking, handicap parking spots there right up against the building. There's going to be some additional parking spots there.
Okay. Mr. Sheerhart, thank you for your hard work. It's a lot of projects to do, so I hope you continue to complete them as you have been doing. So thank you.
It'll be a challenge. I have helped this, this summer.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next, we're going to move into public participation in board meetings. I'm going to call up anyone who's signed up to speak. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. First, for general topics, and the second's for specifically relating to comments regarding the capital improvements program and the operating budget. So the school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects each speaker to be courteous and modeling for our students, how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. And we ask that the speakers address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible through the speakers for the, from the podium. The speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. As a reminder, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting or the hearing. So when the individual steps up, if they could state their name and address, then the timer will start after that. And Suzanne Hagedorn, you're up first. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Suzanne Hagedorn, PhD, of 605 Queensbury Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia, 23185 in the county of York. I'm here tonight because I plan to file a petition early next year to run for the York County School Division Board representing District One in the election that will be held next November. I'm running for school board because I've been disappointed with the leadership on policy matters that I've been seeing from most members of the present board, especially with respect to the issues of expanding recess for elementary schoolers in York County and in transparency in school division governance and operations. While I did find it encouraging sign that the school division opted to survey elementary school parents to find out their views on the expansion of recess, when push came to shove, the YCSD administration chose to ignore the views of a significant majority of parents who took the time to take that survey. Yes, 30 minutes now recommended by the school division are definitely an improvement over the earlier policy, which mandated only 20 minutes. But the fact is that 63% of the parents surveyed expressed a preference for two 40-minute recesses during the school day. For the record, that was 70% of the 90% who wanted more recess for their elementary school children. Currently, individual elementary school principals can decide how to implement the policy, and some may opt to provide more, like the two 20-minute recess periods that I'm happy to say that my own child currently receives every day at Waller Mel Elementary School. Nevertheless, I do not think that getting more than 30 minutes of recess per day should depend on a progressive school principal who has read and understood the scientific and educational research on this issue. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends 60 minutes of activity for elementary school aged children per day, and especially in the winter months when it gets dark early. The more of that time that can happen at school, the better, especially for parents who work regular business hours and thus are not able to supervise their children at home right after school when there's still enough light for outdoor play. Second, I continue to be disappointed at the lack of transparency in the decision-making process on this issue. In October, in order to ensure greater transparency and accountability, I launched, launched the York County School Division Sunshine Facebook Page where I posted the results of various documents I've received in response to Freedom of Information Act requests that I have filed with the YCSD administration beginning in early September. I first requested documents related to the selection process for the recess committee in my FOIA request filed on September 4th. Unfortunately, I have yet to receive any documents explaining the appointment process or why particular individuals on the committee were appointed. I did call the school district in late August to find out who was on the committee and receive those names, which were not disclosed on the YCSD's official webpage, but which you can find on the YCSD Sunshine Facebook Page. After a FOIA request for this recess survey data, I did receive the data, as did all parents. Still, I think that the recess committee really should have paid more attention to the preferences that parents expressed. In sum, I think we need a more responsive school board and we need a more responsive school division. And I'd like to be on it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
And that concludes our open comment period. No one else has signed up to speak. We're going to now move into the public forum.
Can we speak also?
Yeah, did you want to speak on the public? Yes, come, come forward. You were supposed to sign up on the thing, but that's okay. We're going to let you.
We were unaware of that.
We're, that's okay. We're going to let you speak. It's okay. If you just state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Eldonnis and Marlene Allen, 418 Darby Road, Yorktown, Virginia. And, and we came up here to discuss with the board regarding some issues that are big concern for us regarding racial discrimination that our daughter is experiencing in the school. My wife's going to explain some of the details in regards to what's been occurring and what's been happening.
Yeah, she attends Grafton Middle School. We moved here, we're a military family, moved here in 2016. She's attended this school three years. This is her eighth grade year, and she's had two incidents. The first incident, a young man, they were in a group and she was the only African-American in the class. And they were talking about, speaking about rivers. And instead of him saying the Niger River, he emphasized the other N-word more than once. We took it up to the, to the principal. This young man was given a punishment. However, again, this year, actually three weeks ago, she, she's in advanced band, and a comment was made to her by another young man. He walked up and he said, you need to go back to the fields where you came from. So this was addressed by the vice principal. This young man has been punished and he has written an apology letter. But the fact of the matter is, is that we've traveled several places, and this is the, this is the first time ever we've had to endure in our children racism and bullying in the school. And we know what the policy says at the school, but obviously there is an air in this school district that these kids are not understanding that you're not the only one that, that lives here. And a lot of kids are feeling as though they're, they don't belong because this is, these are the things that are being said to them and they're treated as though they don't belong. And my question to the board is, if this would happen to your child, how would you feel? How would that child feel? It is our responsibility as a parent for the health and the welfare of our kids. And when we send our children to school, we look for our children to be protected. And so my question to the York County School Board is, what, what are the plans for creating a zero tolerance for racism? Racism, because we, the kids are experiencing that. Our daughter hasn't been the only one. I do know in the past, there has been an issue in this community back in 2015 with another family. I also know there are several other families here in this district that has had the same issues. They, they may not have taken it up with you, but today we stand on behalf of our family to stand up and ask, what will this district do with creating an atmosphere in this community to protect our children? Because at the end of the day, when a word is spoken that is negative to a 12-year-old, an 11-year-old, and a 13-year-old, what does that do to that developing mind? For me, it was very hurtful. We've served this country.
Okay, thank you.
And given up a lot.
That's it for the comments, but thank you for your, your concern.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's the end of the public comment period. We're now going to move on to the public forum on goals and objectives for the FY20 Capital Improvements Program for the operating budget. And I'm going to open the forum, but before we open for speakers, I'm going to have Dr. Shandor, if you have any comments you'd like to share.
I would. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it on, over to Mr. Bowen, who is going to share some information related to the operating budget and the capital improvements FY20 program. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening is one of many opportunities the citizens of York County have to share their thoughts and recommendations as it relates to our division's FY20's Capital Improvements Program and operating budget. Today, the superintendent and I have hosted four community budget meetings, and tonight is the next step in that process. At the December business meeting, the board will have, will have, the board will have a public hearing on the CIP program and will have a final vote on the plan in January. For the operating budget, the board will have a public forum in January, followed by a public hearing at the February meeting, and followed by the, a vote on the final budget in March. In addition, for those members of the community that cannot attend one of these meetings, there's an opportunity until December 1st to submit your comments or recommendations, suggestions online through our website. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Okay, we're going to move on to the public comments, the public forum for the goals and objectives in the operating budget. And our first speaker is Suzanne Hagedorn.
Hi there. I'm Suzanne Hagedorn, once again, of 605 Queensbury Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia, 23185. And I'm here because I was actually the only parent to show up at, I'm sorry, at Queenslake Middle School for the budget forum that Dr. Shandor and the budget chair held on that. And so I did have a very good conversation with them about what I think your county is doing right, which regardless of my feelings about recess and transparency, I think that there is a lot of things we're doing right. What I'd like to see a little bit more of is more focus on vocational education. I think that this is something that the school district is working on and is considering because I don't think as a college professor that college is necessarily the right fit for everyone. The other thing I would like to see a fiscal priority in the upcoming budget, I don't have a child in the gifted program, but I have many friends who have children in the gifted program. And one of the things they're disappointed in is the fact that gifted kids all spend lots of time on the bus. They all get bussed down to Yorktown for their programs. And this is not how we deal with students who are developmentally disabled. I mean, the ADA would not countenance that, I'm sure. And since these are among some of the best and brightest in our school district and responsible for, you know, the wonderful test score performance that we're always patting ourselves on the back for, I think the school district needs to do better by them. And I think the school district needs to consider making it a financial priority in the next budget to have gifted educators come to where the kids are at, instead of bussing the, the kids to where the gifted program is at. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Wade. State your name and address for us, please.
My name's Melissa Wade. I live at 111 Hidden Lane in Seaford, Virginia. Oh, I'm part of the YEA. I'm the vice president of the York Education Association. I'm here asking for you to consider flexibility with future school calendars. I just have a brief, a couple bullets on how that would affect our students. Number one, it would allow more preparation time for the high school students to prepare for their national test. Two, it allows students larger breaks during the year, and they would have, there'd be... Two, it allows students larger breaks during the year, and they would have, there'd be, the completion of the year would end earlier than what we have now. Builds the much-needed teacher workdays that we are short on now, in particular time for teachers to analyze and prepare for student goal setting. It would help in planning time to work with community members to help plan for STEM activities. And last but not least, it would help build in more flexibility for inclement weather days that we are short on. And we, as we've discussed, there, we're gonna have a lot of snow this winter, so we're already kinda, you know, sorry. I tried to warn you. But, but that's really all, just if you consider that flexibility. The rest of this, the majority of the state do start earlier, they do start in August, or mid-August, or the third week of August, and it allows them more flexibility with that calendar. And then they also leave or graduate early in the high school setting, the first week of June, or around that timeframe. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Next signed up is Carol Bauer.
Good evening, Carol Bauer. I reside at 410 Lakeside Drive. I am also a proud member of the York Education Association, and I'd like to say thank you first of all, and appreciate your efforts that you've made to increase compensation over the years. But I do have a couple other things I'd like you to consider as you develop this next year's budget. The first thing is PERS. PERS compensation needs to be looked at and adjusted. These dedicated and hard-working employees are really the backbone of a lot of the things that we do. They're an indispensable part of the student support system that we have, and without them, that we would not be able to have the successes that we have. Not only do we need to increase the compensation for the PERS, it would be good if we could increase the number of PERS. Certainly, if we have a goal, strategic goals, to increase our literacy and our math, the PERS would, makes that, makes it much easier to accomplish. Third, if we look at the number of days that the PERS are contracted, as Melissa was talking about, the calendar, if we could have time to actually do some planning with the PERS, it would make a huge difference for the teachers and the PERS who work together. The second thing I want to talk about in compensation is the subpay. Certainly, we would like to have a qualified teacher in all of our classes. When we do have the need to have a substitute, we need to offer the compensation that will attract substitutes that can help step in and do what we'd like them to do. In particular, our long-term subs, which we have a number of, do not get the compensation that they need. They certainly are making plans, doing grades, doing conferences, and doing all sorts of things, and they don't get the compensation. One thing we talked about, and we've had this discussion before, is talking about retired teachers. How can we attract them to be our substitutes? If we look at the pay that we offer retired York County School Division employees, I think that would make a difference as well. The third thing that I would like to mention is thank you for your work and initiatives on the teachers as leaders. Looking at programs and things that will help teachers who would like to be leaders stay in the classroom, I think that will also help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. And we have no one else signed up to speak at this public forum, so since there's no one else up to speak for the public forum, I'm gonna close the forum. And we're gonna move on to matters by the, by board members, and I'm gonna start with that on my end. I was able to attend one of the budget forums, the one at Grafton High School, and unfortunately, we had no citizens show up to that one at Grafton High School, which could be a good thing, that they're content with everything we're doing so far. But we're gonna wait and see what everything comes out at the end when we're finalizing the budget. Was able to participate in the principal for a day at Dare Elementary School with Ms. Circey. That was a wonderful day, and at lunch, I was able to sit down and talk with some of the special ed teachers there and converse with them, and it was nice to get a one-on-one with those teachers there at that. And then just last week, I attended the VSBA conference in Wiensburg with a couple of the other board members here, and that was a good learning experience there. And I was also able to attend the Turkey Fest at the school board office, lots of good eats and some good fellowship there with, with all the school board, board people there just this past Friday. So now I'm gonna move on. Dr. George, you're up.
Yes. Waiting for my iPad to come up. Anyway, a couple of things, just start out with some light things, like a little Thanksgiving trivia. The largest turkey ever, do you know how much it weighed?
Dr. George?
Pardon me? What? Oh, largest turkey, yeah, I get it, thank you. Eighty-six pounds. Eighty-six pounds. First Thanksgiving lasted three days, so it poses the question. Dr. Shandor, should we do a three-day break?
Consider it.
Forty-six million turkeys cooked every Thanksgiving, fifty million pumpkin pies, pardoned turkeys. You ever think about these pardoned turkeys, how lucky they really are? Well, they're luckier than you think because the pardoned turkeys in the past have gone on to the Disney World to serve as grand marshals in the annual Thanksgiving parade. And I think that's, that's pretty cool to be a pardoned, pardoned turkey. But anyway, one last one. There was a famous Christmas song that actually was written for Thanksgiving. Does anybody know what that was? Silent Night. Go figure. It's true. Look it up. Couple of opportunities here. One, we're gonna have holiday concerts coming up, and on the website, if you go to the York County School Board website, the school activities calendar, you can look up your specific school, and they can tell you when those, those concerts are, and I don't have to tell you how good they are. It's wonderful, but they'll come and go quickly before you know it. Yes, sir. Another thing, I wanted to just kind of point this out, this is called the, this thing. Sorry. Technology's great. There we go. There we go. Technology Exploration Saturdays. We've got a little snippet, this came across the computer, and I don't know how many parents actually know about this, but you can check with the principals of your school and the science teachers, but the Virginia Space Grant Consortium is inviting seventh and eighth grade students to apply for the Technology Exploration Saturdays. It's a three-part series hosted at Thomas Nelson, Canon, and NASA. Students and parents will be provided with interactive hands-on activities, demonstrations, and career planning resources. Applications are due by December 5th. So once again, that's a Technology Exploration Saturdays. Sounds like a really cool opportunity for, for Saturday, so there's websites on here, but just go to your science teacher or your principal there. And to close, on a little more somber note, I think we all read that Westpac passed away a couple of weeks ago, and I just think it's, it's fitting to think about those in our lives that are close to us and that we love, and maybe it's time to hug them a little tighter and tell them you love them. Thanksgiving is a time just to be thankful for people in our lives. And so as a tribute to little Wes, let's just try to appreciate each other a little bit more each and every day, and to find something to be thankful for. And with that-
Okay, thank you, Dr. George. Ms. Haywood?
Thank you. I don't know how to come behind that, Dr. George. If you recall, back in the last school year with our town hall meetings, I know one of the themes that came out of Rutan's town hall meeting was dress code. And I think it was a central theme that ran across all the town hall meetings. Well, VSBA had a webinar on dress code, and it was fantastic to be a part of that. I did not bring that document, that slides, and I'll get that to you, but that's something I think that we as a board to look at, since it seemed like it ran as a theme across all boards, all, all five, all four town hall meetings. Dr. Shandor was the speaker at the NAACP branch meeting. Usually, we can't attend because their branch meeting is usually the same night as our work session, but with the date being different for November, it was, it was just nice being in that company and being able to, as he shared, the positives that have come out of the division, our accomplishments, our challenges. And lastly, as Mr. Richardson indicated, Virginia School Boards Association just completed its annual conference this past week. Coach Carter, Ken Carter, football coach, was one keynote speaker. But what I found interesting, a lot of the sessions were on equity. I think I mentioned equity to you all once before. How do we, where do our policies stand with respect to equity? And a lot of the sessions spoke to that, so that's something I think hopefully that we can come back to look at. But with that, I wish everyone a joyous and blessed Thanksgiving. Mr. Richardson.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too attended the dress code and the First Amendment webinar that Ms. Haywood brought up. I was actually a little bit surprised at what we couldn't dictate as a school district, but it was very fascinating and very informative. I also attended a webinar on school bus safety as part of my professional development, and I was honored to represent the YSD, YCSD as a delegate at the annual convention last week. That was my first convention, cause today I'm celebrating a year on the school board, yay me, so. So I learned a lot at that convention as well. I did have a pretty busy month. I made four school visits. I was able to visit Dare Elementary, Mount Vernon, Yorktown Elementary, and Seaford. Also, finally made it to the countywide PTA meeting, which was very informative. I had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Shandor, Dr. Guy, and Ms. Skinner regarding the recess committee's decision and recommendations, and I'd like to thank them publicly, I know I thank you privately, but I'd like to thank you publicly for everything that you did in regards to that. Something's better than nothing, so we'll take that. I also attended the Grafton Homecoming Pep Rally, which made me miss my high school days, sort of. And then, and then finally, last week, I had the honor of going to the Grafton Drama Club's one-act plays. One was called Cut, and one was called Crazy Eights. So we have an excellent school district, and our students and our sponsors of clubs and sports and everything just do an outstanding job, and it's just, it's just great to be a part of that. And then finally, I'd like to recognize the Grafton Girls Volleyball Team for being state runner-ups for the fourth year in a row, I think. For some reason, we just can't get past Loudoun County, man. We get, we gotta do something. I think Loudoun County has won it twelve years in a row now, so we'll get there, yeah. And before we go, I don't want to leave anybody out in recognition, so I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Bowen and Mr. Jim Carroll for all that they do for the district in both the finance and the Human Resources Department, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Medford?
Yeah, my topic is collaboration. We heard it with the students today, this evening, with the extension services and the master gardeners, and how they collaborated with this TAB Middle School to do that project. But one of the things that York, the Historic Triangle got to host about a month ago, a little bit less than that, was the International Dare Officer Training, and Ms. Skinner and her staff was very helpful in making sure that those multiple officers had a place to do their practicals in the schools, which then opened up an opportunity for me to get into some buildings. And so I got to visit Mount Vernon, and Seaford, and TAB, and Grafton Bethel on that whirlwind tour while the officers were doing their trainings. But it's like, you know, there's so many different collaborative things, like for example, the training itself, I mean, York, Porco's and Sheriff's Office is involved, the school district's involved, Dare America's involved, other agencies are involved. So it just brings a lot of resources together, and the school division being part of that. So I think when you, when you think about so many things that go on in YCSD and the resources that pulls everything together in some cases, is there's a lot of collaborative efforts going on from just so many different sources, and we hear it in the award winners, we hear it in our recognitions, and we see in our presentations. So I think that's what really stands us apart from a lot of others, is that we're always welcomed outside resources into our district. With that said, I want everybody to enjoy a wonderful Thanksgiving, a little bit of a break. We do get three days, right? No school Wednesday?
Correct.
Just making sure. And obviously, it's a good, great time for family and fellowship and friendship and, reconnecting with folks. And if you travel, travel safely. If you eat, eat well. And I'll be doing a lot of that, and as we all will, but, and we'll come back Monday, maybe a little fuller, but it'll be ready to go, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medford. Now we're gonna move on to financial matters, and Ms. Haywood, you have the financial matters tonight?
Yes, I do. In your packet, you have quite a bit of information, and I'm just gonna give you a cursory review of some of those areas. With respect to consideration of approval of claims certified for payment, for the month of October, some of the significant payments include instructional payments related to expenditures totaling eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, and included payments to Women Mary for thirty thousand two hundred and forty for the fall semester cohort, Project Lead for seventeen thousand forty-eight dollars, Pearson Psychological for eleven thousand three hundred for a universal screener, WHRO for annual assessment for twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty. Payments for technology-related items totaling approximately two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and included payments to the Virginia Business Systems for thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars for copier leases, SHI International for sixty thousand, for six thousand one hundred and sixty for new work order system, Cox Cable for forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-three for telephone, internet, and network services. Payments related to administration total approximately fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, and include a payment to ROI COR for fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars for online forms and online payment program. Several payments to Sodexo totaling two hundred and twenty-three dollars, two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars for September food service cost. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects total approximately one million five hundred thousand, and include payments for one point three million to Veritex for the renovation at TAB Elementary, fifty-three thousand four hundred and eight to Hudson and Associates for the A and E work at TAB Elementary and Grafton Complex, a little over thirty-four thousand to Shaw Integrated for flooring for the TAB High and York High Kivus, and thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-two to Carrier Building Systems for work on the TAB High School chiller. Moving to consideration of approval for financial reports for August of 2018, and these are significant changes relating to the operating budget. For revenue, no significant changes to local revenues. With regards to state revenues through October 2018, there was nine hundred and fifty-one thousand higher than compared to October of 2017. This trend will continue throughout the year as a result of the state funding increase in FY 2019 and the increase in student enrollment. The state sales tax revenue through October 2018 is about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, less than October of 2017. This is due to the timing in which the state transfers sales tax to the school division. Federal revenue through October 2018 is up by more than nine hundred and forty-seven thousand from October of 2017. This is due to the fact that impact aid payments are not received on regular schedule, so amounts will differ month to month due to the timing in which payments are made by the federal government. With regard to expenditures, encumbered expenditures for instruction are about one point six million higher in October of 2018 than in October of 2017, and this is due to the timing in which the purchase order for New Horizons was posted to the financial And if you would look at your food service budget for revenues and expenditures- And if you would look at your food service budget for revenues and expenditures, local revenues for food service through October 2018 are about forty-nine thousand less than in October of 2017. This is largely attributed to school closures for inclement, inclement weather during September and October. And federal revenue through 2018 is a hundred and thirty-six thousand less than in October of 2017. And this is a result of the timing of federal reimbursements for this year. Moving to procurements, consideration of approval of Resolution 18-53, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. And there's a resolution requiring our approval, which was more than five, which is more than fifty thousand. There are seven items on this resolution. Five items are related to capital outlay projects totaling four point five million. And there are two items for the new school, for new school buses totaling four hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. And with that, I move approval, I move, I make a motion to move approval of financial matters as listed.
Second? I've been a second and a motion, a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as listed. Are there any further questions? Okay, Ms. Ford?
The motion is made by Mr. Richardson. The financial matters is listed, and you may cast your votes. The motion is carried, five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, and I'm going to briefly go over the list here. We have approval of donations in the amount of one thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars, approval of minutes of the work session for September 10th, a special meeting and regular meeting on September 17th, and a special meeting and work session on October 8th, all of 2018. Consideration of a motion to approve an overnight field trip for Mount Vernon Elementary and Grafton Bethel Elementary Schools for the first Lego League team. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I move approval of the consent calendar as listed.
Yes, second.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar as listed, and you may cast your vote. The motion has been approved, five to zero. You may move forward, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have action item, which has to do with the revised pay plan and personnel actions. So Dr. Shandor, could you provide information on this?
Yes, Dr. Carroll is actually going to come to the podium. He has information shared for the board. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Richardson, members of the board. Before we use consideration of a motion to revise the FY 19 pay plan, the reason is that it, the plan affects members of Group Three, and we reconsidered, were reconsidered after job description were revised. During the Great Recession, certain positions in the school board office took on additional duties where positions were cut or were not replaced. Staff was concerned after the Group Three quadrennial review that certain positions had not been looked at adequately because of these increased duties. So we directed supervisors to look at the people that were in their staff where they knew that there had been additions to their workload, but it was not reflected in the job descriptions which were used for that quadrennial review. So tonight, you have before you an adjusted FY 19 pay plan, where positions warranted adjustment, not, not all did. And you'll see that there are title changes, but not, there are no FTE positions added here. I have a summary of the revisions. On page 29, we converted the customer, or we're asking to, to convert the customer service purchasing technician, which is currently a grade 15, to accounts payable and procurement coordinator on grade 17. Also, on page nine, you'll see that the, convert the accounting technician at grade 15 to the grant accounting coordinator, grade 17. On page 31, the grant accounting analyst has just upgraded to, from 18 to 19 with no title change. On page 33, convert the telecommunications specialist, grade 19, to the unified communications administrator, grade 21. On page 38, convert the two network administrator positions that are on grade 25 to a network services engineer on grade 26 and network and communications systems engineer, also on grade 26. And this was done to differentiate their duties. And on page 40, convert the senior network administrator on grade 27 to senior network services engineer, grade 28. That concludes the changes. And a note to remember that no additional FTEs were added, just title changes were warranted. And so we recommend approval of the motion.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to approve the revised pay plan?
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions? Okay.
Long overdue.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mr. Anderson, and you may Okay, the motion to approve the revised pay plan passed forward to zero with Mr. Richardson abstaining from voting.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Now we're going to move on to the personnel actions. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
All right, thank you. Typically, personnel actions are handled under the consent calendar, but given that some of the items in the November report were contingent on action item A that you just voted on, we bring consideration at this time.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to approve the personnel actions?
Go ahead. Go ahead, did you move? I'll say. I moved, he's second.
Okay. Any questions on that? Hearing no questions. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve the personnel actions, and you may cast your vote. The motion to approve the personnel actions passed forward to zero with Mr. Richardson abstaining.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Now we're going to move on to policy discussion. Discussion of a quadrennial review of Section D, Fiscal Management Section of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you provide information.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen's podium, if he's going to share some information related to this. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. After review and revisions by the superintendent and assistant county attorney, Section D of the York County School Board Policy Manual is ready for quadrennial review. Many of the proposed revisions are a result of alignment with the Virginia School Board Association's policy manual and do not substantially change practice. Section D Fiscal Management has a total of 28 files. Eight files were revised for substantive changes. And just to give you two examples, file DG-C, School Activity Funds, adds the requirements for bonding principals and other staff responsible for school activity funds. This is not a change of practice. We currently bond those individuals, but it just wasn't stated in our policy. And we also clarified the audit and reporting process for school activity funds. And in file DG-C-Y, Fundraising Activities Conducted by Schools, it revises the statement on fundraising activities to include school clubs, organizations. We added parent staff and also for the benefit of students and schools. Fourteen files were revised for editorial changes, and five files were retained without changes. In one file, DG-C-X, Sales of Photographs and Related Items to Pupils was deleted. The procurement requirements addressed in this policy are covered in policy file DGA and Purchasing Authority. And that's, that concludes my update.
Okay. Any questions?
Can you move a seat?
I just have one, one quick question. I know Mr. Jared had done some professional development with our principals about cash handling and that sort of thing. Is that something we're still continuing to do or planning to do with them as? It's one of those things, if you don't do it for 10 years, you know, I'm just thinking, is it something we're instituting or looking at doing?
Yeah, so we do that annually with our new administrators, and we do it annually also with our financial secretaries.
Secretary Threes, the ones that handle. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks very much.
I've got one question, a reference to contracts. I think I know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway. Do we, as YCSD, enter into contracts that benefit schools or do individual schools enter into contracts, for example, vending machines or, or sports ordering items or, you know, the class photo pictures and things? Is that a division-wide contract or do schools do it individually? Do we, how do we control that?
Those typically are done at the school board level.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
That report. So now we're going to move on to policy first reading. We have none. Policy second reading, we have none. It's a report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members. Just a couple of items this evening. Our, our staff is continuing our budget discussions. We held four sessions in all four middle schools over the past month. Mr. Bowen and I attended those. We've also met with county personnel last week to share information related to the FY 20 budget. As Ms. Haywood indicated earlier, I had the opportunity to speak last week at the NAACP meeting held in Williamsburg to share the work of the school division, specifically the strategic plan, objectives, the strengths of the school division, some of our achievements, and also shared our challenges and the things that we're, we're struggling with to, to improve. For the third time, we completed our third annual Principal for a Day program. Many local elected officials and community leaders were paired with a principal for a day on November 9th to experience firsthand some of the daily challenges and rewards our educators and administrators encounter, encounter daily. I want to thank all of those who gave their time to participate in that program. As Mr. Richardson and Ms. Haywood shared, and Mr. Anderson, last Wednesday and Thursday, our board members attended the annual Virginia School Board Association Convention held in Williamsburg. There were a lot of really good sessions, and it's a great opportunity for the board and myself to participate in educational professional development sessions along other super, along with other superintendents and board members. I also want to give kudos to TAB Middle School for hosting what I hope is the first annual YCSD first Lego League tournament. All 15 teams competing demonstrated five Cs, critical thinking, creative thinking, communications, collaboration, and citizenship. All the YCSD teams that compete in the regional tournaments placed within the competition set, we're super proud of them and for many of our folks who hosted that event. In closing, I want to extend to all staff, parents, and students a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving break. Doesn't start tomorrow. It starts Wednesday, so we want everyone to show up at work tomorrow. We'd love to see all the kids tomorrow as well. So, you know, please enjoy that time with your families. Thank you.
So one more work and school day?
One more day. Please show up.
Thank you. So we'll be back for our work session on Monday, December 3rd. And we had a tentative location for our work, joint work session with the York County Board of Supervisors. Is that?
TAB Public Library.
TAB Public Library. Just wanted to make sure. TAB Public Library on December the 4th.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock. So enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday. Have a safe and great weekend, and this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.